I'm the Community Association Manager at Main Street Community in Stone Mountain. Main Street is about 38 years old, has been around a long time. We're very big on natural preservation. And you know, we started out with a lot of the programs and initiatives that the CEO has sponsored and been a big participant of, and he fully supports it. And if you're not signed up with these agencies, please avail yourselves of them. I'm here to tell you that it does work. We started with the DeKalb County Cleanup. We involved ourselves with the community garden through the DeKalb County Master Gardening Program, Keep DeKalb Beautiful. One DeKalb has been a tremendous resource. And I'd like to encourage all of the communities to use these resources. The county and the CEO has been supportive in providing this. We want to be the greenest community in Georgia. And as a homeowner and an activist, I can truly say that these are some of the things that work. We wanted to keep our neighborhoods safe. I'd like to give a big shout out to the Tucker Precinct and the ICP Programming, which stands for Interfacing. We found that if you give your children something to do that keeps them out of trouble, the parents follow the children. So if you can involve yourselves in these types of programs, then you have a support base for volunteers. And volunteers, as we know, are the backbone of everything. I'd like to thank the CEO for supporting One DeKalb, DeKalb Works, DeKalb Volunteers, and Keep DeKalb Beautiful. I can't say enough. Please, 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 if you have not signed up for these resources, they're yours. We can have the same things as the other parts of DeKalb County, but you have to take one step forward and the help will be there waiting for you. The other thing I'd like to really say a big hearty thanks to the CEO is for having these town meetings to give the citizens a chance to really be there at the grassroots level to say what it is important and what's on your mind. I'd like to remind you that the last town hall meeting is going to be at Tucker High School on March 27th. There have been many, many, many of these meetings. And I'd like to applaud DeKalb County for making yourselves participate in these meetings and getting a chance to be one-on-one with our CEO. So give yourselves a round of applause, first of all. And with that, I'd like to welcome our own DeKalb champion. Ladies and gentlemen, our DeKalb County CEO, Burl Ellis.
Thank you all. Thank you so much. That's a very nice introduction. It's really nice to be here at the Lew Walker Senior Center this evening, because number one is always nice to be here. This is a wonderful facility for our seniors here in this part of the county. And also, because the air conditioning's working now. I don't know, it was about 86 degrees today. It felt a little cooler than yesterday, but the pollen count, I think, was over 9,000 today. So it was pretty high for anybody who has respiratory issues. I've had bronchitis throughout my life. I get kids who have asthma. I told my daughter, "Don't go out for recess today." I said, "Really, you shouldn't go outside today." She says, "What about when I'm walking from the car to the classroom?" Can I... I said, "Okay, well, no outside activities." So you know, with kids, you gotta make it, you gotta make it plain sometimes. But in the CEO's office, I want y'all to know Yacitrius is in the back. She works in our office. We didn't have any air conditioner today. And in my particular office itself, it was just stifling. So I actually feel like I can breathe. I'm glad to be here for a lot of reasons. I'm obviously glad to be with each of you. You heard some talk about One DeKalb, and I'm gonna talk about that, because One DeKalb is the name we give for our Office of Neighborhood Empowerment, but it also embodies the spirit of what DeKalb County is about. One county, one community, but many beautiful parts. And so, we are one, and we work in a united fashion. And there are always those efforts out there that seek to divide us up. But we have to be mindful that our strength comes in our unity. Now, we value our diversity, obviously, but our strength comes in our unity and in working together. And that's what today's about. I'm excited to see so many faces here today, and I'm excited that the Boy Scouts are coming in right now. I hope we get to talk about scouting while we're here. So thank you all for being here. Scouting is near and dear to my heart. Things are looking up in DeKalb County. I want you to know that. When I delivered the State of the County address in early January, I said that the state of DeKalb County is good. And I gave some solid reasons why that is, which I will share with you. But that wasn't the case in January 2009, when I first became CEO. Our financial resources were in disarray. We were spending more of that time than we were bringing in. Why? Because we were well into this recession, and the county had not acted or reacted to the recession swiftly enough. So the first thing we had to do is we had to come in and we had to cut our spending. But you can't just cut your way out of a recession. You have to continue to make strategic investments, because you have to build a foundation that delivers quality of life. That's what our citizens depend upon. So we didn't just cut. We looked at where we were overspending, and we consolidated departments, and we downsized government, and we did away with those services that weren't essential. But there are a number of our services, like our senior services, that are delivered at this center that are in fact essential. And so, we knew we had to continue to make strategic investments, and we looked for sources of revenue in order to do that. We knew we had our parks and our library bond referendum and our roadway projects referendum that were passed in 2006, and we had to continue to invest that in that. And our nation has a problem. It's a problem that affects individual communities, but it's a problem all across the nation. And that's that we have infrastructure that we have not continued to upgrade over the course of the last 25 to 30 years, maybe even 50. So you may hear about our crumbling infrastructure, not just here in DeKalb County, but throughout the United States. You hear about bridges falling, and you hear about roadways falling, and water and sewer systems coming apart. And so, we have to continue to make those investments. Sometimes it's the things that you don't see and you don't think about. But that's what county government delivers. There's some things that come out of the ground and we see it. Beautiful centers like Lew Walker Senior Center. And we have to continue to invest in those, because they deliver quality of life. But this year, this spring, we're gonna be starting to upgrade our water and sewer system. It's what we call our Capital Improvement Program. You know, those are the pipes and those are the plants that make sure that our toilets flush and our water is clean when we turn on the faucet. And if you think about that, you can't live in a community where that doesn't work. And you don't want to wait until those things break down. But we have an aging water and sewer system. Our pipes are old, okay? Anybody know about old pipes, don't raise your hand. But if you know what I'm talking about, I'm 54 years old. I know what I'm talking about, okay? So we've got to upgrade that system and repair it before it starts to fall apart. And that's what we're doing right here in DeKalb County to tune of $1.35 billion. That's a lot of money over the next eight and a half years. Now, our citizens are paying for that through their water rates. But the good news is that we're gonna keep that money invested in the community. And so, we're working with the National Urban League and the Urban League of Greater Atlanta, and Georgia Piedmont Technical College, and Goodwill Industries, and local partners are working to train DeKalb County citizens, along with our Department of Workforce Development. We're training DeKalb County citizens, so that when we hire firms to go out and do the engineering and construction work that needs to be done, they're in turn putting DeKalb County citizens back to work. And we're calling that program. That's good news. Thank you. Thank you very much. We call that, that's our job stimulus program right here. It's a model. It's everything that President Obama, quite frankly, is talking about. And it's a model for what local government can do to put people back to work. We call that One DeKalb Works. And if, think about it, because as One DeKalb, we work and we go back to work. And we have our jobs bus parked right out front, which has a computer lab and all sorts of resources, because we're not gonna wait for people to find our Office of Workforce Development, conveniently located, by the way, in downtown DeCato. But we're gonna take jobs to people. And we're gonna get people registered and trained and ready to go back to work, high-paying jobs, starting this spring. And in the month of April, we'll even have a jobs fair, thank you, this April, at the Maloof Auditorium. So that's, that's good news. We, we know that it's important that not only we create jobs and we rebuild our economy, but we've got to create more things that promote quality of life, like senior centers. And in addition to this center, which we've put a lot of improvements in, and we're continuing to improve, we've got about a $2.3 million budget for senior services this year. And about $1.3 million of that's coming to Lew Walker Center. But we're also using federal funding to build three new senior centers, one in South DeKalb, one in Central DeKalb, and one in North DeKalb. And construction on all those three centers will start by June of this year, to be completed within a year, so that we'll have more facilities like the Lew Walker facility located all throughout DeKalb County. Now, that's good news. We are, thank you. We've got to look after our teachers and our first responders, and we have our One DeKalb Lives program. The president of Citizens Trust Bank, Jim Young, some of you may have known Jim. He passed away recently, but he came to see me last October, and he says, "I have a way that Citizens Trust Bank can begin to help you make loans available through a HUD program, a federal program. We can work with the county to make loans available to teachers and to firefighters and to police officers, our first responders, our community heroes, so that they can purchase foreclosed homes, homes in quality neighborhoods that had been vacated because of the foreclosure crisis. Nice homes, but homes that were just empty and driving down the prices in neighborhoods. And once they qualify, they can get a 50% discount on those homes, so we can move those community heroes back into neighborhoods and then restore those neighborhoods." So we call that One DeKalb Lives, and that's more good news. Maybe not as exciting, because again, you can't see it. But once we realized we were overspending, it was important for us to get our pristine bond rating back. And so, Commissioner Larry Johnson, who's the presiding officer of the Board of Commissioners, and I, along with some staff, flew up to New York last year to go to Wall Street to meet with the bond rating agencies. The rating agencies give us our credit rating. And so, when we go and borrow money, because all governments borrow money, so that we can spread out the timing. Otherwise, every time we built a facility like this, we'd have to put it all down. So we mortgage, just like when we buy a home, when we as individuals buy a home. We borrow money in advance, but it's important that we have good credit, because if we have good credit, then we get lower interest rates on our payments over that time period. And so, we had to go get our bond rating back, because we were overspending and our bond rating had been stripped, just like the US government had been downgraded, and other governments around the world have been downgraded. DeKalb County got downgraded. But the good news is that we did get that rating back. We now have a very high rating. We've gone to the market a couple times, one to begin those water and sewer improvements I've talked about, and another time to do some short-term borrowings, to make sure that we had even cash flow over the course of the year. And so, our fiscal house is in order. Crime is down, violent crime, 36% over the last three years. Property crimes are down 27%. But we're not gonna rest on those laurels either. We're building new police precincts. We've got, how many new precincts? Two, that we're gonna be beginning construction on this year. And we're reconfiguring our police precincts, so that we can bring them closer to the people. One of the complaints that we've heard is that some of the police precincts were spread too thin, and that slows response time. And so, we've got new precincts. We're putting fewer, in other words, we can cover fewer people per police precinct, and that's good news. We're restoring jobs, and we're rebuilding our infrastructure. And then, the last thing I think I want to share with you is that we're supporting our school system. We've got a very good working relationship with the school board members. We've got a good, strong working relationship with the, with the new superintendent, Dr. Cheryl Atkinson. I sit on a Higher Education Advisory Council. It's a council I formed of all our university and college presidents in DeKalb County. I've invited Superintendent Atkinson to join us. We've decided to take on something really big. And so, we are working on a comprehensive program that will be launched this spring to help undergird our, our school system in some very significant ways. We're gonna be working with them. I don't want to pre-announce it, but let me just tell you, it's gonna be big. So we got some good things going on. If you watched the news tonight, you saw that we're gonna be working to upgrade our animal services facility. I just have a feeling that somebody here is here to talk about animal services, right? And I'll be ready for that question, too. All right? So we announced some good news with our Animal Services Task Force tonight, and things are looking up in DeKalb County. So this is the time to plant your roots right here in DeKalb County, because the quality of life is good. Now, here's why we're here tonight. I promised you, as your CEO, that the way I got elected, which was to go into your homes and go into town hall meetings and listen to the citizens of this county, because I said that I want to make your priorities the priorities of our county government, that the way I got elected would be the way I govern. So we've continued this process of going out into the community, whether it be in community buildings. This is number 10, I believe, of the first set of 11 that we're doing this year. Number 11 will be, as you've heard, next week at Tucker High School. But that's just the first set. And then, we're gonna be rolling out some exciting activities in the month of April. So make sure you go to the county's website, www.dekalbcountyga.gov, because April is National County Government Month. And we'll be doing a number of activities centered around health. The theme this year is Healthy Counties, Healthy Families. And so, we'll be out and about and very active in the month of April. And then, we're just gonna continue in May as well. So what we're gonna do tonight is, we're gonna spend our time, we started on time, we're gonna end on time at 8:30, and we're just gonna take questions. And I've got my staff with me, and I'm gonna do my best to honestly and candidly and as openly as I possibly can to answer each and every one of your questions. But if you ask me about that pothole in front of 3218 Sheridan Road, all right, I might not know about that one, so I'm gonna have to punt to Ted Reinhardt. If, in other words, I've got staff here, and they're gonna help me out. Before we start, there's one other important thing I've got to talk about. Just came to my mind. 2012 is an election year, and we've got to get out and vote. And this is a very serious election for a lot of reasons. First of all, I'm pretty sure everybody in here knows that the presidential election is in November. Let me tell you how significant it is to go ahead and register and vote today, if you're not already registered, and to get out and vote, and then to encourage other people to register and get out and vote. And we have advanced voting. We have a lot of things to make voting more convenient in DeKalb County. But President Obama, and I support the president, I've worked closely with this president. This president has helped us deliver a lot of funding to DeKalb County that would have otherwise had to be paid through local taxation. So I want you to know that this administration has been good to DeKalb County. Our first year in office, we got about $185 million in stimulus funds. That is, that's more than some states received. And we got people, you know, governors from states like Alaska, population 600,000, running for national office. But I gotta tell you, DeKalb County is 740,000. We begin in the whole state of Alaska. So we're on the radar screen, okay? And this administration has been good to us. So I'm gonna be working to reelect the president in November. But the president lost Georgia, and I don't know how you feel. I want my vote to count. And the vote only count, you know, we gotta win the whole state for all of the electoral votes to go to the winner of that state. President Obama lost the state of Georgia by, where's Stephen Haynes? Where's Stephen?
2,4636.
Okay, 2,4636 votes. How many unregistered voters do we have in DeKalb County?
About 100,000.
About 100,000. Okay. Okay, more than that. No, that's the total registered voters. Okay, but we got 100,000 people of voting age who are not registered to vote. Now, that 100,000, along with the people who didn't get out to vote last time, can make a significant difference in the outcome of the presidential election in Georgia. And if you watch the news shows, they just keep showing Georgia not even on the map for the Democratic president, okay? But we can prove different. I was up at the Democratic National Headquarters about two weeks ago. I met with Vice President Biden, and I told him we could, that they could win Georgia. All right? And he says, "Well, we're watching." But we can do it. Okay, so you got to register to vote now. Delta Sigma Theta's in the house tonight. They're our community leader who is running. Thank you, Deltas. Must be some Deltas in the house. But no, Delta Sigma Theta's in the house tonight. We are partnering with a number of community organizations under what we call One DeKalb Votes, to get folks registered and out to vote. Now, that's the importance of November. But let me also talk to you about the importance of July. On July the 31st, we have a major election. Our local county officials will be up for election. We got county commission seats. We got a CEO's race. We've got a tax commissioner's race. We've got a, what else? Sheriff's race, district attorney's race, superior, you know, the judges, the clerk of the Superior Court. I mean, we have a number of local races, and we need to be informed about who's running for office, okay? All right? Y'all know who's running for CEO, right? All right. I'd be honored to continue to serve you as your CEO. But it's important that we get educated and we get out to vote in July. And there's also an important transportation referendum. And let me tell you why that's important. We have a major traffic congestion problem in the metro Atlanta area, and that includes DeKalb County. I was a part of regional leaders from 10 counties, 21 of us in all, and we unanimously came up with a project list of, of transportation projects. And for DeKalb County, oh, DeKalb, well, $6.14 billion region-wide of regional transportation projects, and $8.5 billion total, okay, for projects. But if that's $6.14 billion region-wide, regional projects, 20%, 1.3 billion, is coming to DeKalb County. And over $1 billion of that is going to transit. That is big for DeKalb County. We'll raise $800 million over 10 years in sales tax revenue for a penny sales tax, and in return, we'll get $1.3 billion. And by anybody's math, y'all check the math on this, 800 million out, $1.3 billion in. That's 150% return on our investment. Now, we can build transit projects and expand the MARTA rails that we have all throughout DeKalb County, including South DeKalb County. And let me make the case for it. Some people are saying they want more money for rail, okay? You heard that, right? All right. South DeKalb, the extension of the East MARTA rail line, is gonna get $225 million of that money that's coming to DeKalb County. Of the four top-funded transit projects, that is number four. Number one being the DeKalb County project in the Clifton-Emory corridor, number two being the Belt Line, number three being the Northwest Project going up into Cobb County, and number four being, because we're the only county to get two major transit projects, to be the extension of the East Line. I was just in Washington DC, and this is what they told me. This is the philosophy in Washington right now. We don't have enough resources to go around, okay? If you put down, we can help you. If you make a down payment of $225 million, almost a quarter of a billion dollars, that's a lot of money, by anybody's math. If you put it down, we'll help you. If you put zero down, you'll get zero. Now, again, some people say, "Well, we didn't get everything we wanted." Go ask Kasim Reed if he got everything he wanted for the city of Atlanta. Go ask Tim Lee, the chairman of Cobb County, if he got everything he wanted for Cobb County. Go ask Charlotte Nash, the chairman of Gwinnett County, if she got everything she wanted. Nobody got everything they wanted. And in life, seldom do we get everything we want. In politics, Senator, we almost never get everything we want. But DeKalb County is getting a significant 150% return on its investment. It's important that we make that investment now, not just so we can alleviate traffic congestion over the next 10 years, but so that we can begin the important infrastructure that we need for the next generation, and so that we can create jobs right now. 200,000 jobs will be created as a result of that referendum between now and year 2040. 200,000 new jobs. This is a major stimulus, major economic job stimulus for our region. Reduces traffic, improves air quality, and puts a jumpstart in our economy, and builds the framework for the next generation, and most importantly, gets us rail. And that's the only way we're gonna get rail. I can guarantee you this, if the referendum fails, there is no alternative plan to get rail into South DeKalb County. And by the time we regroup and wait for the General Assembly to act and then provide us with another tool to do something, we'll be another few years down the road. And meanwhile, the federal funding that is available will have gone to Charlotte, Seattle, Phoenix, Dallas-Fort Worth, Miami, the Northeast Corridor, and we'll be way behind. So that's my case for transportation. It's important that we get out, know what's at stake, and vote on July the 31st. It's important that we get out in November, understand that we can't take anything for granted, and get out and vote, okay? All right. Thank you all. Let's do some Q and A, okay? Who wants to go first? That's why we're here. The Jobs Fair? Can somebody give me the date of the Jobs Fair? It's gonna be on the Saturday. Saturday, April 14th, I believe, 8:30 to 2 o'clock at the Maloof Auditorium in downtown DeCato, okay? And we'll be advertising, all that'll be on our website. Yes, sir. And I'll, I'll get, we'll bounce around, but I got, I just happened to get three on the same row.
Mr. CEO, Joel Edwards from Kingsbridge Home Association.
Joel, it's good to see you tonight.
Thank you. My question of the year is that you went to Washington DC, and they said they would, if we put down a down payment, they would fund the rest. Now, the commissioners have a different view. They're saying if we don't get $550 million, we're not gonna support it. We're not gonna vote for it. Now, did you have any dialogue, or did you take the commissioners up to Washington DC to convince them or to have a conversation as to what Washington DC said pertaining to the funding?
Yeah, let me, let me be clear about a couple things. First of all, I don't want you to paint the commission with a broad brush. There are some commissioners in opposition, and I think, as you'll see, as we get closer to the referendum date, there's also gonna be some commissioners, there already are some commissioners, who are speaking in favor. So some are outspoken against, some are outspoken in favor. Well, when I was in Washington DC, meeting at the Department of Transportation with the Federal Transit Administration, I was there with Congressman Hank Johnson. So he and I decided to go up together to lobby, to make the case for additional funding. I've also met with MARTA officials, because it's gonna be important for MARTA to weigh in on this. And I'm having a conversation with my colleagues at the Atlanta Regional Commission, because we're gonna have to compete for federal funding in a different way than we've done in the past. Because it's gonna be so much more competitive, what they're telling us is that we can't do it the way we used to do it, each local government making their grant application. In other words, DeKalb County competing against Gwinnett County and against Fulton County, and the city of Atlanta and Cobb County, et cetera. They're gonna look at regions working together to get funds. And so, we're having those conversations as a regional commission, as the Atlanta Regional Commission. And we're gonna have to make some decisions about how we prioritize those requests. So again, I'm working with MARTA. I'm working with the Atlanta Regional Commission. I'm working with our congressman. Now, nobody's gonna give you a guarantee. You know, what they're saying to us is, as a region, we need to get our act together. And if we don't have any money down, we won't get any money in return. You gotta make a down payment. And if you get funding, you might be able to get 50%. In other words, if you put 225 down, you may be able to get another 225. You also have the capacity to use that 225 to borrow through MARTA, and you have the ability to provide a local match through money that we'll get from the referendum. The $1.3 billion is not the only money that DeKalb County will get through the referendum. The county government and our city governments will get another $140 million over the 10-year period on top of that, through what we call a local match. So there'll be opportunities to add to that 225 million in a lot of different ways. The bottom line is what they're saying is that you're gonna have to compete. You're gonna have to compete not just against other counties and cities, but you're gonna have to compete as a region against other regions, and you're gonna have to come to the table with a significant down payment. Now, as I said to a reporter not too long ago, he says, "Yeah, but you only got 225 million." I said, "Have you ever seen $225 million?" I mean, there's a lot of local governments in the metro area that don't I mean, there's a lot of local governments in the metro area that don't have a 225 million dollar annual budget, you see. So 225 million is a, is a major investment towards a transit system. It's more than we've had in many, many years. I think I'm, I would be right in saying in the last 25 years, but I want you to check me on that, okay? And the 500 million number came from this. When we were looking at all the projects in the region, we, we looked at how much it would cost to get, to extend a rail line from a point A to a point B and produce, you know, the top product would be, the most desirable project, product would be heavy rail. In other words, the same kind of rails that MARTA has now, but you don't see too many heavy rail projects across the United States anymore, because people simply don't have federal funding. Nobody builds a rail line with local funding. Nobody does that. It takes federal funding, because it takes billions of dollars to build rail lines, and that is a lot of money. So the, the proposal initially was, they presented us with a lot of options, and they said, "For 522 million dollars, you can extend the MARTA East Line from Indian Creek to Wesley Chapel." Now ultimately, we want to go beyond Wesley Chapel. We want to get to Stonecrest Mall. That's a 1.7 billion dollar project. So, we're looking at a segment of that extension right now to get to Wesley Chapel Road. We didn't get the full 220, I mean, 522 million from the, the regional referendum that we'll vote on in July, but the 225 million is such a significant down payment, I challenge you to tell me where else we're going to get that kind of money. The analogy I give is this, I want to live in a $500,000 house, but I can't afford that. I could say, "I can't afford it, therefore I don't want," I can afford to say, "Live in a $200,000 house." I can say, "No way, I'll be homeless for the next 10 years, put me on the streets." Or I can say, "Let me go ahead and get the down payment and buy that $200,000 house." Anybody think a $200,000 house in Atlanta's not good living? Okay? If you do, you probably living better than I am, all right? So you buy that $200,000 house, and you build equity, and so when you get to 10 years down the road, you can build something more. But you put the down payment down that you have, and then you're able to get the rest. That's what the 225 million dollars gives us. It gives us the down payment to get to rail. Without the down payment, we have no plan to get anything over the next 10 years. Okay. Ms. Miles.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. CEO, for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you for your sacrifice. And thank you for all you do for this county. That said, would you explain to the citizens here this evening, and I know that you have done the very best you could do for us in this transportation initiative, but explain to the citizens, if you would, sir, the one penny that we will pay on top of the one penny that we have paid for 25 years. This down payment, it seems to me, was paid 25 years ago. And what we're getting for this, this, this money that we're going to pay additionally, is another promise. The initiatives that are in this transportation improvement project are projects that were in the MARTA plan for the last 15, 20 years. We have had no cooperation from the state, we've had no cooperation from other counties in the region, and here again, they're asking DeKalb County and the city of Atlanta and Fulton to bear the brunt of the 10-county area. Speak to the fact that we are going to spend another penny on top of the penny that we're already spending, because that isn't going to go away, if I'm correct on that.
Yeah.
That's the first question. Second question, who is responsible for the janitorial services for DeKalb County public buildings? I am speaking specifically of the public safety building on Camp Creek. If you go over there to get any kind of license, particularly a gun permit, it is absolutely, it's, it's, it's deplorable. It is filthy. The elevator doesn't work, hasn't worked in months, I am told, and there's dirt and grime and grease everywhere. How do we look to other people? Which is a segue into my third concern, and that is code enforcement. When, sir, are you going to do something about the lack of leadership that has been complained long and loud? Long and loud in code enforcement by not just residents, but employees themselves? And then, a caveat to that.
Okay, okay.
Caveat to that, let me, let me just throw that in.
I'm not trying to cut y'all off, but I may need you to repeat.
And if you would, sir, if you would, sir, when you consider replacing or shuffling, please consider DeKalb County residents. That's my comment.
Okay.
And questions, thank you.
I'm going to try to start with your last ones, and some of those I'm going to ask Ted Reinhardt, who's our deputy COO over infrastructure, I think he's the right guy to answer, but, um, let, let me talk about code compliance. Code enforcement, or what we now call code compliance. We recognize that having a clean county and a well-functioning department is something that is essential, it's a priority need of our citizens. And so what I did several months ago is that I appointed a, an advisory task force to begin to look at code compliance. Some of the members of the task force are here tonight. And, uh, and they did a very good job of coming up with recommendations. Some of those recommendations had to go before the Board of Commissioners, because they set policy. The CO doesn't set policy. Some of those were adopted in the way that they recommended, and some were not. We have beefed up our forces in terms of taking down signs and, and picking up trash through our Keep DeKalb Beautiful effort, and through just code compliance, through our code compliance officers. We've got a volunteer code compliance, um, training going on now, neighborhood ambassadors, neighborhood, uh, code compliance ambassadors, neighborhood ambassadors, because we simply, with the budget cuts we've had to endure. Now, I said things are looking up in DeKalb County, but I want to be clear, we've cut about 24% of our spending over the last 3 and 1/2 years. And we've been able to do that and still do a good job of delivering the essential services that our citizens depend upon, and because we made some strategic investments along the way, we're continuing to build and upgrade, upgrade our water and sewer system, keep facilities like this operating, and build new senior centers and police precincts. But I can't tell you it hasn't had an impact either. And so, we've seen that we need some help in terms of code compliance officers. One of the ways that we're doing that is through our volunteer corps. Uh, I think that is the primary reason, too, that you see some of our facilities not the way that ideally we would like them. You know, sometimes we have to decide we're going to do this first and do that later, as opposed to do it all at the same time, but I'm, Ted, I want you to, I want, as soon as I finish talking about transportation, I want you to talk about the bathrooms. You asked about the personnel in code compliance. Uh, I take very seriously the call to make sure that we have the very best staffing, particularly at the department head and the cabinet head level, and then I charge them with hiring down the ranks. And I've made a number of personnel changes, starting with changing, uh, the police chief that we had in place, and, and revamping the whole police services and public safety structure. We now have a public safety director, we have a new chief of police, we have a new chief of fire services, uh, and so we, we, we consolidated and done that. We've got a new planning director. In fact, we don't even call him the director of planning, we call him the director of planning and sustainability, because we've consolidated that department. Code compliance actually falls into his department. And I can tell you, Gary Cornell, you've been in your job, how long? About three months?
Yeah.
Two and 1/2 months, to be precise. And, and he is taking on issues, being innovative, he's the most qualified planner, director that we have ever hired into that job. He's Georgia Tech educated, he's Harvard educated, he didn't just eek by, he graduated with honors, he's taught at Florida State University, he ran Gwinnett County's planning department, he's brought in the new business license auditor manager.
Building Development Administrator.
Building Development Administrator, okay. And he is looking at the personnel issues in code compliance, and has promised to bring forth some recommendations to me this week, okay? And I've shared that with members of our code compliance task force, okay? So, without getting into further detail, I can tell you that he is evaluating that, and he's doing such an excellent job in such a short period of time, I think he desires confirmation by the Board of Commissioners, but that's another discussion we can have if y'all ask me tonight, okay? We've got good people like, I know Charles Watley is here, I saw him walk in. Charles is our new director of, of Economic Development, he's revolutionizing that department. And I could go person by person, I could talk about Joel Gottlieb, what he's doing with finance, I could talk about the good work that Ted Reinhardt is doing over our infrastructure group, Betty Davis over One to Cab. I mean, Kelvin Walton is sitting right in front of me, and what he's doing with procurement. I mean, he's a top-notch, nationally-recognized procurement director. That's right. That's right. So I've got a track record as a manager. And we understand that, you know, I've heard from employees, and I'm hearing from citizens, and we're going to address the problems that we have, okay? I can't get all to them all at one time, that's a big bite, it's like drinking out of a fire hose, but, you know, but I'm trying to, trying to do it, and we're seeing real diff, real results as, as, a real change as a result. Uh, you asked me about the transportation penny.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ted's going to answer that. So let me just jump to the transportation penny. The, the question she asks is, "Why invest another penny after the penny that we voted on 40 years ago?" I'm not going to sit here and tell you that all the inequities that were passed on to DeKalb and Fulton and the city of Atlanta have been addressed by the General Assembly. Okay, that's simply not so. And I wouldn't be being honest with you if I told you that. Can't tell you that. Uh, I can't, uh, tell you everything that's going to happen in the future, because, you know, I'm, I'm human, none of us can do that. I can't tell you, I can tell you this, there was legislation that was before the General Assembly today to change the, I mean, not today, this, this session, this year, that would have changed the governing structure of MARTA, that I fought, along with my colleagues from other cities and counties, because we thought it was patently inequitable, didn't provide a pay-to-play system, which is what we desperately need, didn't provide for proportionate, based on population and commitment, to put something into the system representation. And I won't support that. And so that seems to be dead this session. We killed it, because it, as much as we know we need a better governance system for MARTA, that wasn't the better system that we need. So I'm always going to fight for what's right for DeKalb County, and I'm always going to push for equity. But, you know, we advance piecemeal. And I see a real opportunity to advance the ball, to get the infrastructure, the transit infrastructure that we need to, to advance it down the field. And I don't know any other way, other than by making this investment that we're going to get there. And, and I would not have supported the referendum also if DeKalb County, like some counties, was only getting a 70% or 75% or something less than 100% return on investment. But because we're getting more out of it than we're going to be putting into it, and that's only right and fair that DeKalb County should, this is the argument I made at the roundtable. Because my colleague said, "Why should DeKalb County get 150% return on investment?" I said, "Because of the MARTA penny." And I made that argument over and over again, and because you need our votes. And without the MART, without that significant, more than I'm putting in getting back, and actually, I think the return on investment is 160%. I'm being conservative in my numbers, because I might get put on the truth-o-meter. So I think, I think it's 160%, Steen, to be honest, but without that significant return on investment, I would not have raised my hand to support the project list, and I wouldn't be advocating for the passage now. But for all the good reasons I named, the investment in infrastructure, the investment in clean air, the return on investment, and the creation of jobs, the economic, you know, generator that this is going to be, I support it. I would encourage you to do the same. Okay? All right. Oh, Ted, bathrooms, yeah.
Yeah, real, real quickly, because it's really along the lines of what the CEO's been saying. Over the last three years, we had to cut 130 million dollars from the budget, tax funds budgets, in order to not take police officers off the street, to not take firefighters out of the station, to not impact the sheriff, the courts, things that everybody agreed were high, high priorities. Facilities and parks took a disproportionate cut. Those departments have been cut larger than most, because the tax dollars only went so far. So starting three years ago, we did cut our janitorial service back to about 1/3 of what it was before. We really didn't have any choice, there was no extra money to pull from, unless we were going to pull from police or fire, sheriff, courts, or someplace that nobody wanted to, to pull from. So, you hear the old saying, "Rob Peter to pay Paul." Uh, well, we've robbed Peter and Paul, you know, there's nobody left to, to take from. So it's unfortunate, you're seeing that impact.
We haven't robbed anybody, we don't, we don't want to put that.
That would be our option, maybe, to, to get more janitorial, but, no, so you're right, that's the impact. We have 275 county buildings, 5 and 1/2 million square feet of space, and some of them, like the courthouse, we give a little extra service because of the, because of the heavy traffic. And so you are seeing in some of our parks and some of our other facilities, that with 1/3 the janitorial service that used to be there, trash is emptied once a week, bathrooms cleaned once a week, but there's just no other money we can pull from to pay for more than that at this time. Hopefully, we thought by now the economy'd be getting better, and unfortunately, it's been three years running, and it may still stay that way for a while.
We lost 21% of, you know, we get our money primarily through the value of real estate. So everybody in here knows what's happening in real estate. We've lost 21% of our revenue over the last three years. We built a budget this year based upon another 5% decline, hoping that we won't actually see a 5% decline again this year. If we do, that'll be a 26% decline in a four-year period. Every year that I've been CEO, our revenue has fallen. Can you imagine running an organization that serves 740,000 customers, that has 6,500 employees with declining revenue? I can tell you, if I was in the private sector, I know what they do, the gas companies do, they raise the price. I know what the grocery companies do, they raise the price. So virtually every company in the private sector has the benefit. Mayor, it's good to see you, I, I have to recognize our elected officials that are here tonight. But virtually every company in the private sector is raising their prices to make up for the loss of revenue. But we haven't been able to do that to adjust for the losses of revenue, not only from the economy, but also from the creation of these cities that keeps popping up, and the inequitable legislation that we've been given from our General Assembly. So I can't promise you, Steen, that General Assembly's going to be doing anything right as a group. I don't mean individual legislators, we have some fine ones that represent us here in DeKalb and fight for us. But I can tell you that where they fall, we as local representatives, because this is where the rubber meets the road, we have to pick it up and make the difference. But it's had an impact on us, and there's no question about that. We, we can't walk on water. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to ask about utilizing the resources of the, uh, DeKalb County penal system to do some of this cleaning up. I mean, if we don't have the money to do it, why not use the, the people, the jail system, and have them take on some of the, and to clean up the buildings and take on that?
Again, I'm going to let Ted can answer that a lot better than I can, but we, we, we've done a lot of that, and, I mean, we've done some of that to the extent that we can. Mostly people are doing community service, um, some people with more serious crimes. The sheriff has advised us when we should and should not do that. Ted, you want to add to that?
No, the CEO is exactly right, that, and we've talked to the sheriff about this before. The nature of the prisoners he has are generally people who are awaiting trial for a very serious crime, or have been sentenced or awaiting transfer to the state prison. And so, to put them out in a public place, we'd be paying for a guard, and there'd be a high risk. We do get the community service workers who have committed minor crimes, and we have them out picking up litter, cleaning up parks, uh, working in, in various facilities. So that does save us a lot of money, uh, we save a lot of money from that. But, but the people who are in the jail itself, the sheriff could, could tell you the kind of people he's got in there. The, the nature of that group is not one that I think he's comfortable putting out on like a work release or a detail.
New watershed management director and new human resources director. I overlooked them, but I want you to know that we're, we're making the necessary changes that need to be made. I want to go over here next. Yes, ma'am. I know you've been waiting. We'll bounce back and forth. And let me recognize Mayor Deborah Jackson from Latonia, thank you for being here, Mayor. Donna Edler, Donna Edler from our school board is here. Donna, where are you? Right here. Are there any other elected officials? Okay, thank you all for being here. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to, um, tell you that after I spoke with you, I just wanted to thank you for allowing, I can't, I have to keep giving the O'Brien brothers all the recognition. They've actually made it very, very powerful for my event to go and miss. They've actually made it very, very powerful for my event to go, and Ms. Brenda and Ms. Barbara, I'm sorry, Ms. Brenda and Ms. Betty, for helping. And, you know, here's the thing, it's...
Ms. Williams, you have your hair back today. I didn't recognize you at first.
You didn't welcome?
It's good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you also. Here's the thing, and it's so interesting, and I really can't sit here because I'm in a lull. I hear what everybody's saying, and I'm an advocate. For those that don't know me, I'm Cynthia Williams. I am the founder of Love From Afar and PAD, which is Parents Against Distracted Driving. And I go around the entire country sharing my story because my son was killed from distracted driving. But I started right here because he was killed in DeKalb County. So I started here, and I toured the schools. I'm a mediator for the state of Georgia. So what I do is I mediate with students and parents who have problems with their children in the schools, and I sit with them. I do that on a volunteer basis. And so I understand what everybody's saying about what's going on with the families. Trust me, I do. But what I find out is, I take the lead myself. I go and I take 30 kids once a month to the jail, to tour the jail. I take, I split them up between girls and boys. When they're bad at school, they go clean bus stops for me. I mean, I do stuff on my own initiative because I can't go in their homes and do these things and mandate these parents. So the majority of the people at the Public Safety Building are teenagers, 'cause they're in trouble. If you took a trip to the juvenile courthouse, it's standing room only. You can't get in. You're gonna be standing up, waiting. So it's a ton of people who are having a lot of issues, but we have to start in our own homes, or nothing's gonna be done from a county. He can't do it, the chief and all, they can't do nothing, because a lot of these people that are there aren't here tonight. And they're never gonna hear what's going on or what it is to change it. So we have to stand up as parents, whatever career, 'cause what I do know, that when you bury a child, your race, age, gender, career, status, political view, none of that matters. So I promise you, you don't wanna live in the shoes that I've had. Please take initiative to try to just stand up. Whatever it is you have to do, clearly, there's no money for it. Trust me, I do it. I've been, I've had this nonprofit for some years with no funding. But I still stand up every day, get up every morning, and I find a way to make a difference in these children's lives. We have to do it ourselves. You gotta know that.
I just asked Dr. Jabari Samama, who's our Chief of Staff. There was a term I heard today, and we were in a meeting together, and the term was collective impact. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to take a number of volunteer efforts. Really what you talked about is being proactive and working with young people on the front end, really hopefully keep them out of the criminal justice system. And so as we beef up our criminal justice system, our courts and district attorney and solicitor general, along with our police services and our public safety services, as we do that, we still have to make sure that we're investing in our young people on the front end through programs like our PAL Plus program, which is run under our Public Safety Team to help young people. And then we have a number of community-based mentoring and volunteer programs. At the beginning of the year, we documented that we had about 11,000 hours. Was that right? 11,000, 11,000 hours represent? No, it was hundreds of thousands of hours representing $11 million of impact on the county budget through volunteerism. That's what it was. And so what we're trying to do as a county is coordinate as much of these, what's the term again? You know, we're trying to have a collective impact. We're trying to take as many of these organizations, because sometimes we minimize the impact we have, because one group is doing this, and another group is doing that, and another group is doing that. But by bringing them together, we can have a multiplier effect. So thank you for what you're doing, Ms. Williams. Okay, let me go all the way in the back. Yes, sir. And y'all can just move around and tell me where the mics are, okay? So somebody, Henry, you start looking for somebody over here. I'm, I'm, I'll see y'all.
Okay, I walked in late, so I don't know if anybody addressed this. I live right down the street, and the old Atlanta golf course, there used to be the golf course in Atlanta. It's slowly deteriorated, and I've called several times. We, I even have a client that works for you, Betty, Ms. Betty Davis. And I've called her office and other offices, and I'm wondering, what are you guys gonna do about it? It's right down Snap Finger. It's become a public menace. It used to be the golf course in the city. They closed it a few years ago, and you guys had ideas of making it into a once-in-a-lifetime green space, which I thought was an awful idea.
I don't think we own that.
You don't own it?
Yeah, no, we own two golf courses. One is Sugar Creek and one Mystery Valley.
Okay.
So is that the property that is in Hidden Hills? Is that what you're talking about?
No, no, no. This property is right down Snap Finger. If you go...
Oh, Snap Finger. Yeah, yeah, no, that's, I know what you're talking about. That's privately owned. And one time, when I was actually on the Board of Commissioners, you know, when the market was better, we had more people come to us, they were able to borrow money, and they were able to bring ideas and get it rezoned. And that was actually presented to us to rezone that, to do, I think they were gonna do a mixed-use development there. But what's happened with that and a lot of other projects is that they've dried up. Now, we're using some federal resources, and the ability we have as a government, we can do certain types of inducements. In other words, we can offer people reductions on property taxes and other kinds of incentives to do certain kinds of projects. But that's really, we're closing the gap. For example, a couple of years ago, we had a proposal to finance the redevelopment of the GM Center, the GM site in Doraville. That would've created 9,000 jobs throughout the metro area, and a lot of those jobs would've come right here through, from South to Cab. Now, it would've required us to pay a portion of that back, but 45% of it was gonna be subsidized by the federal government. That was a great investment for us, but some of the commissioners voted it down. We're gonna get that done anyway, okay? But what we're gonna be doing is closing the gap after financing is already in place. And so we've gotta do our best to encourage, you know, to create the environment, but ultimately that, particularly golf course you're talking about, is not publicly owned. It's gonna take a private developer to come to, who owns it, or who has it under contract, to come to us with a proposal, and then we may be able to help close the gap.
So when they say you guys own it, and you all have ideas of turning it into a green space, 'cause I'm telling you, the neighborhood is getting worse, and it won't be long before you start finding...
I don't think we own it. I mean, do we own it, Ted? Ted, no, we don't own that.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't own it. What I'm trying to say to you is, you know, best we can do is to make sure that our Public Safety Team and our Code Compliance Team are watching over it to make sure that it doesn't become, you know, something bad.
It already has.
Well...
It already has.
I understand that, sir, but my point I'm making to you is that we are not, we cannot go in and redevelop something that we as a government don't own. Most of the property that we regulate in DeKalb County is privately owned. So we can't do that, but in the meantime, we can help to clean it up and keep it safe. That's our responsibility, and I'd be more than happy to talk to you about that and how we can get a team out there. Okay? Thank you. Yes, sir. I'll come back over here next. You're next. He's, him and then you. After this question, you're next, okay? Here. I'm gonna try to bounce around and get as many people as I can, and be quicker with my answers.
Code compliance. Our largest problem as an average citizen is looking at signs all over this county. I took it upon myself to keep my little spot clean. I'm gonna make sure I do that from now on. Everybody else who wanna do that can do the same. But we have a law, I think it's passed in DeKalb County, that everybody in the county's supposed to be picking up signs. Everybody in the county's supposed to be picking up signs.
Right.
But I see that's not happening. So we got signs all over the county. Back again, just finish, I'm giving the mic back to him, I'm done with this. We gotta do better. We've been working on this almost two years now. We gotta do a lot better than we're doing with code compliance, CEO. And the situation we're talking about, about leadership, we need to deal with that.
Well, first of all, Gary Cornell is here. He's taking notes. I agree with you. You know, we have to continue to work to take the signs down. An ordinance was passed that gives any county official the authority to take it down, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we have the crews to do it. But, you know, the, any county official, well, that costs money. I'm just, I'm being real with you, I'm being straightforward with you. There's a price tag to that. You know, one of the things, we did a strategic planning process for the county, and part of it was to help set priorities. We said, we no longer have the resources to do everything. I mean, I was just reading an article about Jefferson County in Alabama, and...
People are putting signs up.
Yeah, we're doing that, but my point to you is this, is that when we went out and did our strategic planning, we asked people, we said, what services do you want more of? And we got a laundry list. And then we said, what are you willing to sacrifice? Get on more taxes or giving up something else? And we got less of that. But we are working on that program, on that problem, and Gary, you're looking at the management structure.
Yes, sir.
Okay, he's got it. Yes, thank you.
I just wanted to go back to the question that he was asking about the golf course over there. It's becoming a dumping ground, and I have talked with Rose and Drainage, and they have put up no dumping signs. And the weeds have up us just terrible over there. But I've been working with code enforcement, and they're supposed to find out who owned that property, because whether the county owns it or not, somebody needs to maintain it. I mean, they dump refrigerators over there, tires. It's awful. It's a eyesore over there. And code enforcement works wonders over there, because they go over there and sanitation to pick up the trash over there. But somebody needs to start maintaining that property, because a lot of the neighbors are talking about snakes that are getting into their yards from that property, because it holds water, and especially in the summertime.
Gary, I want you to please get together with her and the gentleman in the back to make sure, it sounds like code compliance is working on it, but it may be, and I don't know this, but it may be, ma'am, that we don't know who owns it yet.
Yeah, the code enforcement is working.
Okay, so once we determine who that is, those, the owner will be cited, but I wanna make sure that you report back to them so they can tell their neighbors what's going on. Okay?